Order, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Angel.
Here.
Commissioner Arbke.
Here.
Commissioner Jennings.
Here.
Commissioner Peck.
Here.
Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time is our citizens' forum. This is where anyone from the audience can come up to the podium, give us your name and address, and you may speak on anything not on today's agenda. If not, we'll proceed. There are no awards and proclamations, nor public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time, so we will move on to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of October 5th, 2009. Item 6.2, authorize purchase of an electronic ticketing solution software hardware system from Cardinal Tracking Incorporated in amount of $28,013.90.
Is there an item that a commissioner wishes to pull from the consent agenda? I just have a quick question regarding the, I didn't want to pull this, I just have a quick question. In the, in the blue sheet, it said something about this Casio, which is a hardware brand employed by both companies, service center and any hardware repairs are handled in-house. What does that mean?
That means they don't send it outside. This company actually does the, does the repair in-house.
But where is that company? Is it here in Salina?
No. It's, uh, uh, in, uh, actually, it should be T2 Systems. I think I've got that confused. Did we want, want that?
It's Cardinal.
It is Cardinal, okay.
It is Cardinal.
Yeah, Cardinal is in Lewisville, Texas.
Okay, so, so any repairs you would still have to send to Texas and they repair them there?
Yes, but they would not send, then, they would not send it to Casio's repair facility. They would send it in-house. My understanding is they would send us a replacement also to use while the repairs are being made.
And how many of these are there?
Two.
Two?
Uh-huh.
And does, is it going to take everyone very long to be trained on them, or?
I just spoke to Lieutenant Lammer regarding that, and he's our traffic unit commander, and he said that we should be up fairly quickly.
Okay.
On that.
Okay, thank you. Chief Hill, those are my, those are my only questions.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'll need a motion to approve.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Motion passes 5-0. There is no development business, so we'll move on to administration.
Item 8.1, second reading ordinance number 09-10,518, amending Chapter 8, Article 3, Division 3, Section 8-191 of the Salina Code pertaining to exemptions from skilled trade contracting and trade licensing.
This ordinance was passed on first reading October the 5th, and since that time, no comments have been received. Is there any public comment at this time? If not, I will bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I move we adopt ordinance number 09-10518 on second reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance number 09-10518 on second reading. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Angel.
Aye.
Commissioner Arbke.
Aye.
Commissioner Jennings.
Aye.
Commissioner Peck.
Aye.
Mayor Larson.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0.
Item 8.2, second reading ordinance number 09-10,520, vacating a portion of the Broadway, Boulevard, and North Street right-of-way.
Again, this ordinance was passed on first reading October the 5th, and since that time, no comments have been received. I'll open it up for public comment. If not, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I move we adopt ordinance number 09-10520 on second reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance number 09-10520 on second reading. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Angel.
Aye.
Commissioner Arbke.
Aye.
Commissioner Jennings.
Aye.
Commissioner Peck.
Aye.
Mayor Larson.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0.
Item 8.3, resolution number 09-6667, amending Section 1 of Resolution Number 09-6599 relating to the hike bike paths on the South 9th Street and Shilling Road.
Mr. Franz.
Mayor and Commissioners, thank you. This modifies the authorization for the South 9th Improvement Project, does not modify the amount in any way. It simply modifies the description to specifically refer to the hike bike paths along both streets. They were inadvertently omitted from the original resolution, so.
Okay. Any questions of Mr. Franz? If not, I'll open it up for public comment. With none, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 09-6661, amending Section 1 of Resolution Number 09-6599 relating to street and intersection improvements in Salina.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution Number 09-667, amending Section 1 of Resolution Number 09-6599 relating to the hike bike paths on South 9th Street and Shilling Road. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes 5-0.
Item 8.4, authorized purchase of an Internet access system for the Water Customer Accounting Division.
Mr. Franz.
Thank you. Over the last period of years in the Water Customer Accounting, we've been attempting to improve the level of service and provide for some staff efficiencies through application of technologies. Includes the, probably the most recent improvement was the implementation of the telephone interactive voice response system. That has been very successful, now receiving somewhere in the order of 9% to 10% of all of our payments, as well as substantially reducing the workload in the office dealing with telephone calls and providing access to customers, as well as helping us with collection, collection notices. We've been reviewing Internet access systems. We still get a number of requests to provide customers with the ability to pay their bills over the Internet and to look at their accounts. We have, are recommending a system called Click2Gov. It's very tightly integrated with our Water Customer Accounting System, provides people with the ability to pay with debit or credit cards, or with electronic checks, lets them inquire as to their status of their accounts, including being able to see a visual representation of their bill. It will hold up to three years history that will be available for them to view online. We think that it is, it would be a very good addition to the customer service of the department. In addition, it, it does provide support for some other options, including a paperless billing system, whereas instead of sending a paper bill out to those customers who requested the service, we would simply send an email notice out saying their bill is available, and then they can check on that through the Internet system and pay it that way. We've also had requests for that specifically, is to do a paperless billing. Cost for the system is $38,810. That's hardware, software installation, basically everything that is turnkey. We have line item budget for that, in the amount of $40,000. Staff authorizes, or staff doesn't authorize, staff recommends, but the commission authorizes purchase of the Click2Go system. Be glad to answer any questions.
Did you, I think you answered my question. Did you say you'd be able, we would be able to go back three years and view the history?
Yes.
Okay. Also, what is a graphic view?
Simply, it's simply, as opposed to the telephone system, you listen to a voice tell you what your balance is, or what your payment last month is. In the Internet system, the interface is different. You see a representation of that on the screen. They also do have available, while you ask, is, it does have some graphics that it will display graphically, your bill history in a bar graph type of format. So it's just generally a more visual system than is the telephone system.
My other question also is, the very bottom, on that matrix, the very bottom column says the five-year present value cost, including estimated support and transaction fees.
Yes.
That is what it will cost for a total of five years?
Yes.
Now, that kind of breaks down to about $18,000 a year. Does that include the 38?
Yes.
Is that on top?
That includes the 38,000.
It did, okay.
Also includes all the transaction fees associated with the credit card transactions and the support costs.
Okay, so for the next five years, it's going to, it's going to cost approximately $18,000.
Yes.
Is that, what, what had we been, I mean, what was our, our budgeted amount? I understand right now we do have the telephone service.
Mm-hmm.
What did we spend on that to upgrade to that?
That system, I believe, cost us about $75,000.
Okay, so that was the initial?
That was the initial, yes.
To get us upgraded.
And actually, that, that time internally, we did have a lot of discussion about whether we should do that first, or the Internet first, and we eventually settled on the IVR first because of the abilities that it had to do outgoing calls and to help us pull people off the street for our collections program. So that was basically what tipped the balance.
Okay.
To acquiring that portion of the system first.
Any other questions of Mr. Franz?
Is there any cost recovery capability of this, or is this, will it go to increase?
There, there are a number of possibilities. Clearly, a lot depends on how well it's utilized. In cities that we have talked to that have both the IVR system and the Internet payment system, it tends to run about a 60-40 split. Some have a higher utilization of the Internet, some higher utilization of the telephone system. There will probably be some people who will, who are now using our IVR that will, will switch to using this as a preferred means. We will pick up new customers who simply don't like using the telephone for that, and who like this interface, who like working this way. To the extent that we pick up new customers doing this, it does hold the potential of decreasing the load on staff in the office. There are some definite possibilities for making some changes there as we get into the system. It's a little bit hard to say, or make a commitment as to it's going to be X number of man-hours, because we just don't know. There's also the possibility of, of reducing postage and mailing costs. If the paperless billing system becomes, becomes well utilized, obviously, we don't, we don't incur those postage costs then for mailing those bills out. So yeah, there are some possibilities. I can't hang a number on them right now.
Commissioners, real quick, too, one other advantage of this is that currently there are folks that may work through their own bank to do online banking and online bill paying and so forth. Obviously, this would be a more direct route, and the difference is, is this is more direct. The timing is much quicker. If you go the other way, where it's more in an online banking route, there's a time delay in the processing, but by the time you actually have them do that, and the time that the transaction occurs. So if you're one who likes to maybe wait and pay your bill at the very end, so for whatever reason, you may find that you, under the current systems, that it doesn't work very well, and you could actually be late, whereas in this system, it's for the most part immediate.
Yeah. There is, thank you, Jason. We do have not a lot of issues, but we do hear from people who, you know, pay through their, their bank checks, and it takes anywhere from three to 10 days to get that through the system back to us. This happens at the time they make the entry, so it's, it's immediate.
But so is the IVR method of paying, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay. Rod, you said that install that IVR was $75,000 to start. Is there any ongoing yearly maintenance fee?
Uh, there's, there's obviously the transaction fees that occur as a result of the card transactions. There is an annual maintenance fee on that also, yes.
Ballpark on what the yearly is?
I could not answer that at this point.
It looks like on your chart, the, being able to view the billing history, payment history, and detailed billing statements is something we would be able to do with Internet and right now under the IVR. Are you providing that to customers at all, or are you mailing out hard copies if they request?
The, at their request, we'll mail out a hard copy. They do, they can make selections from the keypad on the telephone that allow them to listen. It will tell them your most recent payment was this, but it's limited. It'll tell them what their balance is, it'll tell them what their most recent payment was, is, what their most recent billing was. So it's not like they don't have that information, but it's not in the kind of visual format we're used to seeing. It's, it's given.
They can't go back like 12 months on the phone?
No, no.
But they could request it in a hard copy form.
They could request it in a hard copy, and we would of course.
Is there a charge for that?
No.
Okay. The other question I had, it looks like IVR handles about 9% of your customers, and then you're receiving requests for Internet access. What percent of the current customers are asking for Internet? Ballpark, if you've got it?
I, you know, I don't know. It's, I think it's the kind of thing, when they think about asking for it, they ask for it, you know, so, we haven't kept count, but it, it is a request that they're familiar with in the office.
Is the, being able to consolidate multiple accounts under one login, is that mostly for landlords?
Uh, that would be the most obvious application, is if somebody has, you know, five, or eight, or 10 accounts, they could then consolidate those and, and pay them under one login and with one, one payment.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Thank you. I'll open it up to public comment. There is none, I will bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I move we authorize the purchase of the Click2Gov online access system for the Water Customer Accounting Division.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we authorize a purchase of an Internet access system for the Water Customer Accounting Division. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay.
Nay.
We have two nay and three yea.
Oh, it was Jennings and Angel.
Item 8.5, transient guest tax. Subitem 8.5A, Resolution Number 09-6664, approving the regional cultural grant marketing program. Subitem 8.5B, Resolution Number 09-6665, approving the marketing plan for Kenwood and Oakdale Parks. Subitem 8.5C, Resolution Number 09-6666, authorize a new hotel and motel transient guest tax agreement with the Chamber of Commerce.
Mr. Gage.
Mayor and Commissioners, earlier this year, the City Commission approved changing the transient guest tax from 5% to 6.7%. The purpose of that was to use 1% to help pay off improvements to the Bicentennial Center. 0.5% of that is to go to a cultural, a regional cultural grant marketing program, and 0.2% is to go to Kenwood, Oakdale Park marketing of those facilities, primarily would impact the Bicentennial Center. I'll try to go through the programs real quick. What we've done is you have three separate actions, but for expediency's sake, we combined all these into one blue sheet since they all basically relate. The regional cultural grant marketing program is attached. The purpose of this is to increase the economic impact associated with overnight stays at Salina Hotels and Motels, specifically through visitors attending cultural arts venues and events by means of enhancing regional marketing efforts of cultural arts organizations in the Salina area through a portion of the transient guest tax. The short of it is, is that we believe that the draw that we provide with our cultural organizations can be utilized to create those overnight events, and with that, we think it makes sense to utilize the transient guest tax, because we, we think we can benefit the hotels and motels. Specifically, the program includes the following components. Funding of this is really intended to target those who live beyond a 100-mile radius, or those who are slightly closer, but the, the whole impact is to incentivize multi-day events. If we can't do that, then obviously we can't get to the overnight stay, which is the linkage here. The funding source is, again, 0.5% of the transient guest tax. That's an approximate value of about $100,000. It's a quarterly distribution of those funds to the chamber, and the third action you have would be a chamber agreement to provide for the administration of this program. The city departments and agencies are not eligible for funding. There is some language allowing staff to make non-substantive language changes in the resolution, just in case we run across something and say, "Well, I wish we would have worded that different," but certainly wouldn't be something that would change the substance of the actual program. There are two funds with the grant program. There's a larger fund, which we call the 80% funding, which is $80,000, and then there's a fund number two, which is 20%. With the larger fund, it's based on larger agencies submitting marketing plans and budgets. The purpose of that is to demonstrate collaborative regional marketing efforts. We've got a really good relationship among our cultural entities, and they've, they've really talked a lot about this, and some of them do work together, but this gives us the opportunity to really refine that, and to really have them complement each other. We think we can do that. The marketing plans will be reviewed for grant funding by representatives of the chamber, visit Salina, the city of Salina, with final approval by the Chamber Board of Directors. The grant award is limited to 25% of the annual funding, with a one-to-one match, a minimum of $5,000. The funds would be distributed to the cultural agencies on a quarterly basis, and year-end fund balances would be carried over into the program for the next year. Fund number two, which is 20% of the funding, deals with regional marketing grant. Basically, it's used for regional marketing of an event. It's more of an event-specific type marketing grant, not to produce an event, but to market for the event. That's the difference, again, to reach out, to bring people here. Fund Run One grant participants are not eligible for Fund Two Grant, for the Fund Two Grant Program. Grants are reviewed and awarded by committee with representation from the hotel industry, cultural arts representative, city of Salina representative, Chamber Board of Directors appointee, and visit Salina director. The grant award is a reimbursement up to $2,000 with a one-to-two match. A year-end fund balances shall carry over until the balance exceeds 200% of the annual budget, with the remaining funds transferred back to the city to go back in the Bicentennial Center capital improvements support. This, actually both of these, but in particular this one requires specific project reporting, including financial summaries, copies of invoices, sample of marketing materials. The second program is the marketing, the general marketing plan for the Kenwood and Oakdale Parks. That's attached as well. Its main purpose is to promote and market existing events at the Bicentennial Center and future events as well, and also in the parks in general that create a regional draw to the community. The key is going to be the regional draw. Again, that's the thing that we're really going for. Included in the plan is really aspects of the promotional marketing strategy, use of marketing materials, use of print advertising, targeting of event planners, and the targeted trade shows. The marketing will include, again, the Bicentennial Center, the Kenwood Cove, Aquatic Park, Smoky Hill River Festival, and other Kenwood and Oakdale Park events that demonstrate regional draw. The agreement has been, we also have the chamber agreement, which would be an amendment to an agreement we currently have with the chamber, as they provide general convention and tourism services to us, and obviously, we need to modify it for these programs. We have, when you look at the agreement, the only changes relate to the funding for these programs, and also they refer back to these guidelines that you're, hopefully we'll, we'll take action on this afternoon. 3% of the transient guest tax would be for general convention and tourism promotion. That's consistent with the past program we've had. Again, 0.5% for the regional, regional cultural grant program, and 0.2% for the marketing plan for Kenwood and Oakdale Parks. Based on the estimated revenue of the increased transient guest tax increment of 0.7% for these programs, the collective total is estimated to be about $140,000 for all the marketing efforts. Again, we've, have three separate actions for you on the three, on the two, well, the grant program, the marketing plan, and then the amendment to the chambers hotel and motel transient guest tax agreement. Be happy to answer any questions. We also have Jared Johnson with Clark Meisenlinville, who drafted the resolutions, and I'll say you have an amended resolution that should be in front of you, highlighted in yellow. As a housekeeping item, we wanted to make sure we included the language to encourage and promote convention and tourism, and that's the only change you'll find there. Also, Marshall Perry, our Bicentennial Center manager, and Sylvia Rice, who runs the Business Salina program, which is a division of the Chamber of Commerce. So hopefully, out of all of us, we can answer all the questions that you might have.
Questions of Mr. Gage?
Yeah, I have a few. First of all, are these all pay-as-you-go? We get the quarterly allotments, and then that's the budgeted numbers for the next quarter activities?
Yeah, that will, obviously, that will determine the budget. As, historically, the transient guest tax has grown around the 5% range. We haven't seen that this year during the recessionary times, but, and we don't know if we'll see it in 2010, that's yet to be seen, but at some point, we expect to see some natural growth in that, so that will in essence establish the budgeted amounts.
Okay. On the, on the regional cultural marketing grants, is there any language that's been included to either encourage or discourage the same, the same applicant for year in, year out? I'm experienced with some state grants that some will discourage that. You can use the grant money for one purpose, one time, that's it. Some, you have three, some they, they actually encourage multiple uses by the same. Have, has there any, been any thought to that, any opposition or, or support?
The, I'll see if I can try to answer it, and maybe Sylvia can, can help out. Obviously, the main purpose is regional marketing, and so if you're one of the agencies, you're probably going to be a larger agency when you look at the dollar amounts in this program, which limits you to a certain number of agencies in the community. It's not to say you couldn't have a small agency participate, but this grant is really intended to be a larger number, and with the matching, we anticipate it'll be the larger agencies. The whole purpose is truly to get them together, to combine their marketing efforts and pre-plan those ahead of time. That's the first thing, to form that formal relationship that needs to happen. We also have some other ideas that we'd like to work with them on, particularly those that deal with ticketing. We think we can, we can combine efforts, potentially get together and see if we can do that, to help with that ability for someone to buy on the other end. So when we think about year in and year out, we would generally anticipate some of the same agencies, and for the most part, the same types of things, although I think when we look, for example, after year one, we'll see, are we really effective with those marketing efforts? Are we really, truly getting folks to come to Salina and spend the night? If we are not, we definitely need to do something different. So part of that's going to be the review of the effectiveness of the program. If we are effective, we want to keep looking at other ways to be even more effective and increase our draw as much as we possibly can, such as combined ticketing and other things that we are going to continue to look at. So that's really all that this probably anticipates at this point in time, but I'll see if Sylvia has anything to add.
Thanks, Jason. The only thing I would probably add, Commissioner, would be that while we have not specifically precluded them, there'll be a part of the application process that will ask them what their history of application has been. As Jason said, if they've been successful in a particular promotion, even if it's for an event that they'd like to reapply for, we would want to encourage them to do that, maybe do something new, but to try to grow that, that positive movement toward bringing the overnight visitation.
Good.
I have a question about the committees that are reviewing the grants. It looks like for the bigger fund, it's someone from the city and then the chamber that are reviewing the marketing plans for Fund Two, which is the smaller grant awards. We've got a more diverse committee that's looking at it, a hotel representative, cultural arts representative, city representative, chamber representative. Do you know why, or why the makeup is so different, why they did that?
I'll have Sylvia answer that. There's a team of folks who really looked at that and put that together.
We did talk about that a lot. The second fund, Fund Two, we would anticipate will have a much wider group of folks applying for that, and we felt like we needed to have quite a few people looking at each of those individual applications, even though most of them will be for smaller amounts of money. As we move into this for the first time, we really want some input from folks that have been heavily involved in the creation of the funding process, which is why the wording has been left the way it is for that Fund One. It also allows us to have, frankly, more folks involved. As I explained to Jason, we talk about hotelier input. In a perfect situation, we may have the hotelier, for example, that was involved in writing the guidelines, involved in that Fund One, a different hotelier involved in reading the applications for Fund Two, and so forth. I would see that there might be a more specific or more formal listing as we move forward, but we felt like it was really important to have folks that had a real strong understanding of the guidelines as we first move forward. The other thing we wanted to make sure of is that we didn't have anyone reading applications or reviewing marketing plans. or reviewing marketing plans that had a vested interest in the other. And so we want local arts folks involved in looking at that Fund One large pool, but we want to make sure it's nobody that has a vested interest in anybody that might be applying in Fund Two and vice versa.
So why don't you have, you know, an arts representative listed on the committee in reviewing Fund One marketing plans or a hotelier listed as reviewing the grant, the marketing?
We haven't specifically listed it. I mean, we could do that. I, what we don't really want to do is have an identical group because we don't want the very same folks involved, if that makes sense. Because there is, for example, as you read through the guidelines, Connie Bonphy was very involved in the guidelines process, as was Marshall, as was myself and a specific couple of, of hoteliers. We want to make sure those are different folks looking at the two. I can speak from the chamber perspective. It is our intention to make sure that the folks that are our representatives on that Fund One cover the hotelier standpoint, the non, non-involved arts standpoint from the, from the other fund. Does that answer your question?
So a representative of Visit Salina, of the chamber, Visit Salina is not necessarily an employee of the chamber. You're just going to pick a representative that may be a hotelier.
Absolutely. In fact, I would think that it probably would not be a staff person.
We, we do have to be careful not to accidentally create a conflict of interest and since the, the purpose is to get heads in beds and who knows where the co-marketing may go, we're talking about the cultural programs, but in essence, it's to match those up also with hoteliers. So when we do that, we need to be careful not to put too many and then all of a sudden we have a conflict on what we can and can't market.
What, can you give us some ideas for the development of these two funds of some anticipated users of these grants? Some of the events or some of the programs, so that, that, I've heard some of those. It really might help some of the other commissioners to get an idea of, okay, these are the things that really Fund One would apply to and these are the Fund Two things.
Sure. In Fund One, because we are looking at, as Jason said, some of the larger organizations, basically you have to have a $5,000 regional marketing buy-in to begin with before you can participate. So we're looking at probably some of the larger organizations in that fund, probably, and I hate to assume, but probably you'll be seeing Salina Community Theater, The Stiefel Theater, Rolling Hills, Wildlife Adventure, quite possibly the Art Center, possibly the Symphony, just kind of depends on what they do with their individual marketing plans and budgets as we move forward. And then in the other fund, because the, the buy-in match is much smaller, you know, you may have folks that are looking at this going in the first year and saying, you know, I, I probably would qualify for Fund One, but I think it makes strategically for my organization more sense to apply for a couple of things in Fund Two, very specific weekend kinds of events. And so that's, that's what we're anticipating. The first year in will be interesting to kind of see where people think they best fit.
And by city departments, that would be like Arts and Humanities would not qualify? The museum would not qualify?
The way that the guideline, would you like to answer that? Would you like?
I was going to say, that's, that's correct, but go ahead and.
That's correct. If they have, if they have a foundation component and that, there was an event that was not receiving city funding in any other way, if they wanted to create a new event of some sort, for example, and they were looking only at private dollars, they could apply through their, through that component of the organization, but no, you're right, Arts and Humanities could not apply as the commission, Smoky Hill Museum, the bicentennial center as an entity, those would all be not applicable.
Parks, Parks and Rec.
Correct.
And what is the, what is, refresh my memory, this, I remember hearing about this at the chamber first, but what is the timeline on that? When will, when will the application process, if this is passed, when is the application process? Is it ongoing throughout the year or wasn't there just a, a bit of a timeline of when they would qualify to submit all this and then there was a, was there a waiting period or how did that?
It's sort of both of those things. The funds have already begun to be collected.
Correct.
For Fund One, the first step, first step for us will be to finalize the application itself. We're waiting for, for authorization from you all to move forward. We'll finish that and then we will notify the, the cultural arts organizations that the mechanism has been approved. We'll call them together, hear the guidelines, let them kind of figure out where they think they fit and then we'll hold a required meeting for them to sit down and kind of go through the process with us. Applications for the Fund Two, the, kind of the smaller bank of, of dollars, will be just after the first of the year, this first year. It's our recommendation that moving forward, it would be a fall application, but that it not necessarily coincide with other local grants to kind of give the agency some time to, to do that planning process. And then funds would be awarded and again, dollars would be distributed as they come in. And that will be something that's a little different for some of these organizations. In Fund One, for example, they may apply for a $25,000 match and that may be approved based on their marketing plan. Those will also be due just after the first of the year, this first year. But once they're approved, they'll still only be distributed quarterly so that if transient guest tax is down for a quarter, their distribution is down for a quarter. It will follow the flow of the dollars coming in.
Okay, that's what I wondered.
Do, do we have a definition of cultural arts?
We do.
Okay.
It, it's in the guidelines. Do you have a?
Yeah.
That was probably one of our first challenges.
Yeah.
Yeah. Commissioners, let's see here.
You're going to tell me where it is in here, aren't you?
Yeah, it's page one on Exhibit A. And what it is, it's a definition of cultural arts organizations and I think it definitely covers the cultural arts aspect. And what it is, is a nonprofit organi, nonprofit organizations is determined by the Kansas Secretary of State that provide enlightenment and entertainment to the public through the production, exhibition, advancement or preservation of art, literature, music, theater, dance, zoology, science, botany, natural history or cultural history.
So it's just nonprofit? It's, it's a not?
Yes.
It's a not, not-for-profit, for not-for-profit organizations?
That's true, but I think that, you know, as we talked about early in the process, it's important to remember that these folks, as they're building their marketing plans, while the funding mechanism is for the nonprofits, we have encouraged them and will encourage, continue to encourage them to look even in the for-profit sector for their partnerships.
Okay.
Does that sort of make sense? They could still have a partner that comes in and says, I would really like to be a part of that from the, those dollars just won't be matched by these funds.
Additional questions?
So during this, during the development of this, we didn't see any for-profit things within the community that were worthy of promotion assistance to help with heads in beds? Or does that, I mean, it, it looks like then we have gone towards nonprofit cultural arts, which is fine, and towards improving the bicentennial center. And I just need to be sure that we clearly embrace that and, and that when we vote, that's, that's moving forward exactly in that direction and saying, that was the intent and this is blessing the original intent.
I think that that is true and it, and it does certainly speak to the original intent of these dollars. I would also mention that there are some other opportunities that we as an agency, you know, we partner with for-profits to do other kinds of promotions, other kinds of marketing kinds of campaigns, whether it be cooperative billboards, that sort of thing. So there are those kinds of things available, just not specifically from this funding mechanism.
Yeah, Commissioner, if we did consider that, that would be out of that Fund Two, that 20% of the, of the 0.5% of the transient guest tax, so about what, $40,000?
But, but that also says cultural arts to it and that's why I wanted to make sure that we had a definition for cultural arts so that we could fully combat anybody that, that had a complaint that they were turned down for any reason, that we did have a go-to definition and, and because we do and, and non, not-for-profit is involved in that, then it, it would be kind of an A and B thing, I would think in there.
Yeah, based on this definition, this clearly not-for-profit. Yeah, we would need to change that or have a separate definition for the Fund One program versus the Fund Two program if we considered the for-profit.
If the Fund Two had been called Regional Arts and Events Marketing Grant, then it would be, it wouldn't be viewed with that, the cultural term.
Correct.
You're right. That's exactly how it's written at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I'll open it up to public comment.
I'm Gary Dutton, 1405 Adam Travis Court. I didn't come here today for this issue. I just came to be involved in our democratic process, but just a view. But since we're considering this, I would like to say I have a little bit of a problem with the city spending money on cultural awareness and what seems to be the promotion of nonprofit art groups or organizations. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? If not, I will bring it back to the commission for action. And we do need three motions for the three different items.
Mayor, I move we adopt resolution number 09-6664, creating a regional cultural grant marketing program funded with 0.5% of the transient guest tax.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt resolution number 09-6664, creating a regional cultural grant marketing program funded with 0.5% of the transient guest tax. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes 5-0.
Mayor, I move we adopt resolution number 09-6665, creating a Kenwood and Oakdale Parks marketing plan funded with 0.2% of the transient guest tax.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution number 09-6665, approving the marketing plan for Kenwood and Oakdale Parks using 0.2% of the transient guest tax. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion passes four to one with Jennings opposing.
Mayor, I move we adopt resolution number 09-6666, approving the amended hotel and motel transient guest tax agreement.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt resolution number 09-6666, authorizing a hotel and motel transient guest tax agreement with the Chamber of Commerce. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes 5-0. Is there any other business? If not, I'll ask for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion passes 5-0. We are adjourned. Thank you.